The members present, I declare the motion passed. Freight Containers Safety Amendments Bill 2019. This council now becomes committee of the whole council to consider the Freight Containers Safety Amendments Bill 2019. And I propose the question to you that the following clauses stand part of the bill, clauses one to twelve. Mister Ted Hui. Thank you, Mister Loeng. Now, I didn't get a chance to speak during the second reading debate, although I pressed the button. I was going to talk about the merits and demerits of the bill as a whole. But then, of course, Mister Loeng, now that we are talking about the clauses standing part of the bill, then I will focus on why I opposed to clauses one to stand twelve standing part of the bill. Now, I didn't get a chance to talk about the merits and demerits of the bill. So I think your ruling was abuse of power, it was not lawful. Members, as you leave, please do not make too much noise, Mister Ted Hui, please. Because under Article seventy-two, Mister Ted Hui, please, can you wear your microphone properly? Because under Article seventy-two of the Basic Law, the president is just to preside over meetings, he should not limit members' chances of speaking. I didn't get a chance to put on record that, so I'd like to use eight or ten seconds to put on record that you do not have the power to limit member's speech. Now, I would focus on the clauses standing part of the bill. Clauses one, three, five, six, eight, and nine. I would like to share with you my observation because that lead me to question these clauses. In fact, I'm opposed to these clauses as the basis of why I I'm against these clauses standing part of the bill. First, clause one is the short title and the commencement date of the amendment. In every bill, of course, there would be a similar clause. That is, the ordinance comes in operation on the day to be appointed by the Secretary for Transport and Housing by gazette, by gazetto. Now, why am I questioning all this particular clause? Now, members spoke on that, and the officials mentioned that in his reply too. It's because the government didn't do a good job in introducing the bill and commencing the amendments. There's been delay, and the official who spoke just now admitted to that. We're talking about an international convention. The International Convention for Safe Containers, there were amendments to the convention. It is after eight or ten years before the administration tabled local legislation to implement those requirements. Of course, we would question the competence of the government. And what I want to point out here is whether there is systematic, a systematic fault. Maybe it's not the case that the bureau is not able to cope with the workload. My doubt, I, my suspicion is that the is the International Law Division of the Department of Justice, the head of the division has to shoulder this responsibility because for the International Law Division is supposed to enact legis, to draft legislation to implement international convention requirements. So is it the case that there is a backlog in the International Law Division of the Department of Justice? Now, the division is responsible for the implementation of bilateral agreements and so on. It also has to take care of mutual assistance on the surrender fugitives agreement. So I wonder if it's because there was this, you know, saga about the entry on the entry decision movement, and so the D O G was not able to deal with this amendments. Now, there's no mention when the Secretary for Transport and Housing may appoint the date of commencement of this amendment ordinance. So my opposition is about principles. And because I have this question, so I don't think this clause stands part of the bill. Now, I want to talk about the other clauses, which amend sections five, six, ten A, and fourteen of the ordinance. And then the direct reference approach is adopted here. Many members queried that. Is it just the government being lazy? We're talking about cap five oh six, which is the Freight Container Safety Ordinance. And now, in that ordinance, the requirements of the International Convention are incorporated into the ordinance. But now this amendment is on the basis of the direct reference approach. So I'm against clause twelve standing part of the bill because the effect of that is the whole of Schedule One will be deleted from the Freight Container Safety Ordinance. Why do I think that's not desirable? And that's why I'm opposing to this clause standing part of the bill. Now, because we know that when it comes to the principles of law drafting, we have to make sure that the language is concise and easy to follow. It should be easy for the public to understand the text of the ordinance that is the principle to go by in drafting laws. So the law draftsman must be fully aware of that. But then now we are adopting the direct reference approach. So that means a whole section in the ordinance would be deleted or repealed. And that section is on testing and structural safety of containers. I'm not an expert. But I have someone with legal training. So how would I look at this bill? Now, say for any member of the public, if that person reads the Schedule One, he will know what the testing and safety requirements are. That is, you can do the following task to make sure that there won't be the container is not deformed, is safe, and so on. So the requirements are clear enough for anyone to understand. And then in Schedule One, it explains further what are the methods for testing. One method is lifting. That means you just lift the container for five minutes and then put it back on the ground, and that's enough for testing purpose. So all the specifications are spelled out in details here. And, you know, how do we do the lifting? You know, there are various forms of lifting, and if so we could use either one form or another of lifting to do the testing. And then there could be a stacking approach too, and then the standards for stacking, you know, like a one-point-eight-g standard is adopted and so on. So this is to, you know, achieve a certain internal load. I'm not going to read out all the technical details, but what I want to tell the public is that originally, for Schedule One, it is clearly spelled out, anyone, even if someone is not an engineer, could follow what the requirements are. Of course, there are certain engineering terms.
However, if the clause, I mean clauses five, six, eight, nine, eleven, twelve stand part of the bill, then the consequence is that the schedule would be repealed. And once the, once the schedule is repealed, there'll be direct references to Annex Two of the Convention. And that goes back to what Mister Jeremy Tam said during the second reading debate. Annex Two to the Convention isn't part of the principal legislation. So when one refers or tries to refer to that part, and, well, indeed, I asked the legal advisor. The public has no access to the Convention or the Annex. You can only have access to it online after paying a fee, and we need to ask a legal research division of the Legislative Council. It is against the broad principle in electing a piece of legislation, there should not be too cumbersome cross-referencing so that the public has no accessibility to the law. And for clauses five, six, eight, nine, I think it's against this legal principle. I think that the administration is doing a sloppy job. This is against the legal principle. Apart from that, I also need to point out, well, as already pointed out by other members like Mister Wuchihai, it is all right to make direct references to the Convention. As long as you pay a fee, you will be able to have access on the internet. However, the Convention is monolingual. It's really a predicament for our council as well as members because we have a Chinese text here. In fact, my assistant dug out the Chinese version from the Macau Legislative Council archive. Can we assume that everyone reads English, not just engineers? How are we, how are we integrating with the mainland if we do not even have a Chinese version in our legislation? How are you going to account for that for President Xi? We don't just serve expats. Now, if you take a look at Article nine of the Basic Law, it says that for, it clearly provides that Chinese language and English are official languages. However, Section Four of the Official Languages Ordinance provides very clearly that all legislation should be enacted and promulgated in both languages, Chinese and English, with some exceptions. Say, if there is an amendment to an original legislation that only comes in English, so and so, then the amendment can be spared with a Chinese translation, etc. But this is definitely not the case. So we have to bear in mind Article nine of the Basic Law, which, if we refer to the Official Languages Ordinance, we are required to provide both Chinese and English versions in our legislation. So are we now going against that? You may argue that for Annex Two to the Convention, you have the English version. I mean, you translated the word convention and annex into Chinese, but not the content of the Convention. So I question whether it's appropriate to just make direct references. I can find one precedent, and that is the Emergency Shipping Ordinance that also adopted the direct reference approach. At the Panel on Commerce and Industry, we mentioned the single-window mechanism involving a number of international conventions and treaties, including endangered species and the application for permits and licenses and the procedures required under these international treaties and conventions. So instead of preparing our own version and just make direct references to the international conventions, I remember under the single-window mechanism, over ten government departments are involved. And I wonder whether the legal personnel are able to refer to the relevant provisions to make applications. So I think that in a way, the law will be affected, and legal professionals, businessmen, etc., they all stand to be affected. So perhaps you should respond to my question. Why is it that for some bills, direct reference approach is adopted for some others, it's not? And even if D R A is adopted, you should explain why you're unable to provide a Chinese translation for us to make it accessible and comprehensible for the public so that I don't need to refer to the Convention. If I'm in a shipping business, I don't need to pay extra. I don't, for the copy, and not even the legislature could get a copy of that. Only the government has a copy of the Convention, which is not included in the administration's paper submitted to our council. I think this is really despicable. And on these reasons, I am against clauses one to twelve standing part of the bill, so Wuchihai. Well, in fact, I'm also going to oppose these clauses standing part of the bill, and I'm going to explain my stance. Now, we talked about the D R A being adopted for Freight Container Safety Amendment Bill 2019, and according to the Undersecretary's explanation, the Convention applies to all party members around the world, and as such, we should also introduce the Convention to our local legislation in a comprehensive manner. However, Clause ten amends to Section twenty-seven of the ordinance so that to fully or partially implement the international regulations. It reads that whether in whole or in part to an international agreement relating to the safety of freight containers adopted by the I M O as from time to time revised and amended by any revision or amendment that applies to Hong Kong. And that's the original version. And now it reads that the director can make any regulation that facilitates the application of the international agreement to Hong Kong. In other words, the director has discretion whether or not to introduce the revisions or amendments to the Convention in Hong Kong. However, we also mentioned that these revisions or amendments are applicable to all party members. I mean, all the Convention states. Now, why is it that in such circumstances, the right, the director can be selective on whether the provisions of the Convention should be applied in Hong Kong? It seems to be contradicting with the D R A. According to the Undersecretary, well, if this is an international agreement and that it should be introduced in whole, then there should not be any discretion allowing the secretary to decide or to make regulations in relation to that because you have, this way, the secretary would have a discretion to make a choice. So on what basis you should decide whether in whole or in part the agreement should be adopted? If it is adopted only in part, then again, it's contradictory. Would it go against the Convention itself? Or the long lapse since the Convention has been passed? And it is not yet adopted in our local legislation. So in deciding whether any international agreement should be adopted and applied in Hong Kong in the future, this provision will bring uncertainties which should be avoided. As far as law drafting is concerned, we should make our legislation as precise as possible. Adopting the Undersecretary's logic, this drafting method will cause uncertainty. The second point is about Clause seven. If the construction of the container was completed before the first of July, twenty fourteen, and no structural modification has ever been made to the container, then Schedule Two as enforced immediately before the commencement date of the ordinance, the S A P can be marked affixed to the container instead of following Schedule Two, which provides additional marking for containers exceeding a certain kilo newton. So it seems that the line is drawn at the first of July, twenty fourteen. But what is the basis? Because of the International Convention, the two resolutions were passed in twenty-ten and twenty-twelve. So unless your explanation is that before twenty-fourteen, you had a different way of handling containers, that might be one justification, which we haven't seen. We must also bear in mind, since this is provided in your bill, that in fact, there is no exemption. Again, why we, why are we allowing another exemption in our bill? And that the container complete, construction of the container completed before first of July, twenty-fourteen should not be subject to the new requirement. Again, I find this arrangement peculiar. It also relates to implementation. For containers constructed before the first of July, twenty-fourteen, they should observe one set of rules. For those constructed after that date, another set of rules. So that makes the law enforcement agencies work difficult. If they see a container with or without an S A P, how do they tell whether the container is constructed before or after that date? That would cause the, that would render the legislation ineffective. What's the meaning of having this provision here? We have a grave doubt on it. The Undersecretary may say that we should be rest assured because we do not manufacture containers ourselves. We only import containers from elsewhere. But then if we have this provision in our law, if we are to enforce the law, then there must be proper rules to follow. Otherwise, this piece of legislation would be nothing but window dressing. It only serves our own purpose to make it look like that we are complying with the law.
In twenty-twelve, it has already been approved, but then we waited eight to ten years until today before we amended the legislation, and this shows that the government has not comply with its duty. Thirdly, I would like to point out that there is actually a Chinese version of the Annex. And we looked at Annex E this time. Other than replacing weight with mass, the terms are actually quite similar. So originally, you might be replacing with new terms. And then you just chose to repeal it, Schedule One, and then substitute with it Annex Two. Actually, the Chinese version was quite easily understood. But now, it's very vague. We need to go back to look for the English version in Annex Two before we can understand the relevant legislation. This is actually not an ideal situation. Why did the administration choose to adopt this option? The original Chinese version, which was very clear, had to be repealed. You only need to make some very minor amendments. Instead, you chose to repeal the entire part. How is that conducive to the amendment? We want all users to find it user-friendly, and therefore the wordings should be made very clear and not try to add in footnotes and explanatory notes. It's not beneficial to the bill, and it's very difficult for practitioners to understand and adopt. The administration did not come up with a Chinese version this time, but actually, in twenty-fourteen, Macau has already prepared an English, and prepared a Chinese version. Other than the last part talking about the one container with one door removed, all the other is only small technical amendments that needed to be made consistent. Macau was able to achieve that. And I understand that the mainland has also made amendments to its Chinese version. Why did the Hong Kong government choose not to come up with a Chinese version? Ted Hui talked about the importance of bilingual legislation. The government has chosen to take it in a very relaxed manner, and we are very disappointed that the government has not chosen to prepare a Chinese version. I do not want to be long-minded in the other amendments. Just touching on the four points I have just made already shows that there is inappropriate measures taken in the legislation of the Freight Container Safety Amendment Bill. It poses difficulties to practitioners. And it is also difficult for users to understand. I am against this amendment, and this is something that we should not neglect. Finally, I would like to point out that the government made it clear that the Marine Department will need to exercise its authority. But the location of the containers will lead to safety issues. Safety issues is not restricted to, on ships. There may also be danger on land. The Marine Department only has the authority to exercise power on board. However, as we all know, containers in Hong Kong, let's take Kuichung Container Port as an example, are not adequate, and some containers may be moved to brownfield sites. Without safety measures, our workers who are grappling with the stacking of the containers may be subject to risk and danger. Such as on occasions when strong typhoon signal is hoisted. The Freight Containers Safety Amendment Bill is only amended technically. However, there is a, there is still issues within that we need to deal with, and therefore And therefore, I am against this amendment bill. Mr. Tettow, I call for a quorum.
Mr. Andrew Wang.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the closest standing part of the bill, I'd like to speak in detail the provisions I mentioned briefly during the second reading. I raised some queries. But now I'd like to speak more about the technical details. I'm not going to repeat the purpose of the bill, I'm sure you know that. In 2010 and 2013, new rules were implemented under the International Convention. So how come the government only came so late with the legislative amendment? So anyway, seven or ten years have been passed. And because this is an international convention, so actually, from my understanding with the sector, the requirements have been followed, whether or not the ordinance has been amended. So it may seem irrelevant, therefore, on the surface. But then I'm rather shocked by the reply of the undersecretary. So you know, seven, ten years have passed and the legislative amendment is just some superficial exercise. And the requirements were not changed under the ordinance. But still, people come, you know, nevertheless, it's now decided to propose the legislative amendments. But I see so many flaws in the amendments. We asked about principles, but the reply given was shocking. That is, well, it's fine if you question that the provisions not spelled out correctly properly. And there's problem of supervision. Well, it doesn't really matter because we do not manufacture containers in Hong Kong. So does it mean that because there is no manufacturing of containers in Hong Kong, then there is no need to carefully implement the regulatory provisions? Of course, we are, while we're still a major container port, even though, you know, our ranking is sliding. But still, that is not the answer you should give us. Now, in response to the official's reply, that's why I gave my views. Mr. Andrew Wang, this is not an extension of the second reading debate. Please come back to the committee stage, that is, whether you support or not the closest standing part of the bill. Well, that's what I'm doing, Mr. Chairman. Well, there was a call for chromes, so I was disrupted. I couldn't find my notes. Anyway, I'm going to talk about those clauses in a moment. So what are the flaws in the clauses? You know, thanks for your reminder, Mr. Chairman. First, I want to talk about clause seven of the bill. This is important. That is, the stacking value, 192,000, and also the wrecking capacity, less than 1,500 kilo newtons. There is exemption here. Why am I talking about this? Because as the undersecretary said, this is the obligation. But then, at the same time, exemptions are allowed. But how are these exemptions to be implemented? The secretary couldn't explain that. I don't see there is such a provision in the International Convention. If I've overlooked that, please let me know in your reply. Why is it there was this exemption for containers made before 2014? And now that there is this provision, how are you going to implement it? Well, you can't say that, oh, okay, yes, we have the provision, but we're not able to comply. I'm sure, I think we want you to be able to, for the sector to be able to adapt to the new arrangement. So clause seven, the way it's weathered, presents a loophole. So it seems that you are just perfunctorily legislating for the amendments. And so the bill is full of flawed, and you're not able to explain why you're doing certain things. Because there is this clause seven in the bill. In the light of the International Convention, there are, you know, limits on the stacking and wrecking values. So if that's the case, why is it that you are allowing this exemption? So you haven't explained that. And then clauses five, six, eight, and nine. These are also issues of concern to me. For clauses five, six, eight, and nine, they are to repeal the original Schedule One. So that the schedule would become an annex. I think there's a problem with this approach. First of all, the government has adopted the direct reference approach. I'd like to add to what Mr. Tettow and Mr. Wuchihai said earlier. Now, there are eight different testing methods for containers with one door open or removed. And then there are changes to the text, but these are minor. Now, it's been seven and ten years. I don't know why, if the government was being lazy or it didn't care, whatever. Why is it that it couldn't amend the existing schedule so that these controversies would not exist? Because it's about letting the public know it's about this council exercising its powers. So why can't they amend the existing schedule within the existing legal framework? So I see that as an inadequacy. Because in future, the public would not be able to know about the testing requirements for containers. And then it will also, you know, infringe upon our powers. Now, I agree with them, you know, with the two members who spoke on this subject. Now, and it's strange, it's not that I look down upon Macau. Now, President Xi Jinping has said before that Macau is doing better than us. So in this case, Macau has amended the legislation earlier. Mr. Andrew Wang, these points have been raised in the second reading debate and in the committee stage. Now, I haven't spoken on that before. If someone else has said it, that doesn't mean that I don't need to speak. Please don't repeat points already made. I honestly cannot agree with you, Mr. Chairman. Many members, including those from the loyalist camp, they may repeat my points, and I may repeat their points. Why is it that I'm not allowed to repeat points? Now, we are in the committee stage on whether the clauses would stand part of the bill. I'm talking about the clauses. Now, you talk about Macau. Macau is not within the scope of this debate. So please come back to the debate. Well, if you are patient, you'll follow what I'm trying to say. I'm saying that why can't they... I'm saying that why can't they do a better job in making the legislative amendments? At least we should do as good, well, as Macau, that's what I'm trying to say. Anyway, they are now turning this schedule into an annex. I don't think that approach is right. I won't repeat my points since you're so impatient. But then for clauses five, six, eight and nine, the approach adopted is inflexible. And then we could not, you know, perform the necessary regulations. Now, last point, it would just take me a few more minutes. Clause 10 of the bill. That is to amend section 27, one of the freight container safety ordinance. So it's a whether in whole and part to an international agreement relating to the safety of freight containers adopted by the International Maritime Organization, as from time to time revised or amended by any revision or amendments that applies to Hong Kong. So that means if there are such revisions, then the version, the convention version prevails. So here we're talking about any international agreement applicable to Hong Kong. It says, and there's a deletion here. That means the director of, with this amendment, that means the director of marine will have the power to deal directly with the issue. So I find this form of drafting flawed. Because we are giving powers to the director of a marine, but then there is no specific definition in the law on the criteria for implementing in whole or in part. Well, of course, we could refer back to the convention. And but then flies in the face of what the secretary said in his reply just now. Now, if what's in the schedule is equivalent to the convention, then there is no question of whether the convention should apply in whole or in part or whether the convention applies to Hong Kong. So I think all these problems show that, you know, after so long, you're still not able to spell out the amendments properly and clearly. Gives an impression that these amendments are flawed. And you're not able to let the public understand the provisions in a clear manner as we would usually do. So you're not doing a good job with this amendment and that's my view. Thank you.
Members. Well, we're at the second reading debate in the committee stage of this bill and we've spent five hours on it. At this stage, five members have already asked for six quorum calls. Total time spent was over one hour, one hour. And deputy and myself already reminded members on numerous occasions. Let me remind members once again at this stage. Members should indicate whether they support clauses one to 12 standing part of the bill. We have limited time in this council. Members should not repeat the merits and principles already debated in the second reading debate. At the committee stage, if members could focus on debating on these clauses, we should have sufficient time. As chairman, I have the responsibility of ensuring a smooth and fair conduct of the meeting and also strike a balance between the rights of members to speak and effective conduct of meeting. In accordance with Article 72, one of the basic law. I'm going to exercise the power given by the president, given to the president. That, and that the committee stage should conclude by 2:30 this afternoon. And then the clauses standing part of the bill will be put to a vote. I invite members to speak as succinctly as possible so that more members can speak. And if, in my view, the member is digressing or repeating points already made by other members, I shall direct the member to discontinue his speech, Professor Joseph Lee. Chairman, at this stage, I'd like to speak on clauses one, four and six. Basically, as an outsider, I have more concern about occupational safety and public health. And I have some questions for the undersecretary, whether with the passage of the bill, there will be improvement as far as occupational safety and public health are concerned. Clause one sets out very clearly that there'll be changes to the short title and the commencement date. Now, during the second reading, members pointed out that the resolution was first passed eight years ago and the amendment bill has come by too late. While there are divergent views. The question is, with a change of the commencement date, whether the risk would be lower? The secretary did not give an explanation just now. Perhaps the secretary or his deputy can give us a more detailed explanation. As the current ordinance stands, how many accidents have occurred? Now, I'm talking about containers not up to standard, etc. Well, Professor Joseph Lee, what you are saying now should have been said at the at the second reading debate stage, not now. Thank you, Chairman, for the reminder. I am not a member of the bills committee in my recollection. No bills committee was set up, that is why I'm putting forward my queries to the undersecretary. I hope that occupational safety can be enhanced with passage of the bill. It's only my duty to do so. And if these clauses stand part of the bill so that the short title and the commencement date are changed, then it may be conducive to minimizing accidents. So my question is, would the administration say if the commencement date is revised? Well, let's say if it's, if the commencement date is the 5th of November, whether afterwards there'll be fewer accidents? I think the undersecretary should also explain to us to facilitate the public's understanding. It's not just for insiders of the industry. I'm a layman and I need to know that as well. So these are the views I'd like to put forward in relation to clause one. For clause four, my understanding is that for part two of clause four, the word quality, the word weight will change to mass. Well, in fact, I'm totally ignorant about this, about the implications of the change from weight to mass. But according to the administration's paper, it has to do with the testing of containers and safety. And that the test will be outsourced. I don't know whether there'll be called AP and then approval will be given after they pass the test. What about the comparison with the current situation? During the second reading debate, a member raised this point. It has remained unchanged for eight years. There's a question whether it is changed simply for the sake of it, so that we can bring us in line with other countries. And that's the purpose of this updating exercise. Still, I'm not questioning that, Chairman. I'm just wondering whether this could really minimize the risk of accidents and enhance safety. Now, on weight and mass, I don't understand the difference. I did really poorly at physics, in physics, when I was studying in secondary school. If I support clause four standing part of the bill, I wonder if containers would be safer. So I hope the undersecretary would explain to me in a moment whether it's simply for window dressing or whether in substance, container operations would be safer and practitioners in the industry would also have better protection. Say for lifting tests for five minutes via forklift. I'm not talking about these details. I'm talking in general, whether for container operations, it would be safer in general. Not to mention, well, the containers with one door open to, for better ventilation, etc. I'm just focusing on clause four, replacing the references to weight by mass. My question is whether it will make things safer. Third point, clause six. Other members already explained the SAP and stacking, wrecking, so on and so forth. Again, I'm totally ignorant of these matters. I'm just asking if the clause stands part of the bill, it should improve the legislation because it provides clarity. I am not going to question the so-called international standards or standards adopted by other countries either. I'm not going to argue, for example, whether there's a need to have a Chinese version or not. But since you propose a change in clause six, my understanding is that we do not manufacture containers in Hong Kong. We have approved testing agencies to test the safety of containers in Hong Kong. So if clause six stands part of the bill, the safety approve, approval place would be placed at conspicuous locations at the top of containers so that when containers are stacked, it will be easily identifiable. Now, I'm not in the industry. I just have this impression. Say if I drive by container yards in the new territories, I see a tall stack of containers. And again, near the terminals, I see similar stacking of containers on vessels. So even if there is no such SAP, will it be discovered? Now, during the second reading debate, the secretary replied by saying that there would be dedicated officers patrolling the container yards and that's really good. Now, in other words, safety will be improved operationally, there'll be improvements as well. But the crux of the matter is, after implementing the bill, how do you ensure safety? And in fact, in the administration's paper, page four, it is said that there'll be no implications on financial, civil service, etc. Again, I'm a layman, Chairman. I don't know. If clause six stands part of the bill and if the bill is passed, how many containers will have to be converted and or modified? And after modification, definitely there'll be additional patrol and possible prosecution. I have no idea whether the marine department has the capacity to do that. Now, we have this very strong recollection of the Lama, or vessel collision near Lama Island relating to the marine department. So the secretary needs to explain to us whether the proposal has no financial, civil service implications, etc. Because that's the administration's position. But after clause six stands part of the bill, you need to conduct patrols, right? And then if the vessel is registered in Panama, well, I don't know about these matters anyway. Say if the containers are stacked at Kuicheng, how are you going to conduct a patrol? Say if it's stacked in a container yard somewhere in a new territories, then it's outside the remit of the marine department. I need to make sure after the bill is passed, there'll be improvements in terms of occupational safety and public health. But then the administration says the bill has no financial or civil service as implications. My concern is that after the bill is passed, perhaps it will float another staffing proposal to create a post at the rank of D6 or D8 to oversee the operations. Then by then, should I approve the funding application? The undersecretary should explain if the clause stands part of the bill, whether indeed there is no financial, civil service, economic implications and that the containers will be properly patrolled to make sure that they're up to standard. When the containers are transported out of Hong Kong, we won't be regarded as a loving stock for our standard work. And of course, when containers are stacked on land, these new measures should help minimize risks so that there won't be additional commitment required. So in terms of clauses one, four and six standing part of the bill, these are the questions I put to the secretary. I hope in a moment, the undersecretary can respond to my queries. Mr. Alvin Young.
I'm going to speak on clauses three and four of the bill. They relate to some drafting changes. And also clause seven about exemptions. I'd like to express my concern. Clauses three and four. The crux of the amendment is to replace weight by mass, a replacement of these two terms. Now, Professor Joseph Lee made this point. And this is actually an amendment following the IMO's amendment. Is a translation of the terms which carry totally different meaning. For weight, well, literally, I mean, mass, literally, it's well, it's to be, I mean, the first term is mass and it relates to the weight in kilogram. For the other one, it's to be measured in Newton. So say this, for this iPhone is 9.8 Newton.
So there is this gravity in any place on earth. Weight plus speed is something that even secondary students understand. In our daily lives, we basically speak of weight instead of mass. I'm not trying to give a science class here. I am just saying that those who have studied physics in secondary school will understand what I'm talking about. Now, the IMO wants to replace the references to weight by mass and that has lead to some issues. You're just trying to put the exact translation in the legislation and that may lead to misunderstanding. Anyone who understands English will not see the replacement of weight to mass will not be a problem. The only problem lies with the Chinese zàoláng. On the mainland, mass, zàoláng in Chinese refers to quality. The first time I hear the word zàoláng was when I watched diving in Olympics. So many commentators will talk about the perfect rendering of the dive. I didn't understand it in the beginning, but now I do. So it's allow different understanding of language and syntax. The zàoláng there referred to quality. I know that Chinese people use different terms and words in different places. So we see that there is a So we see that there is a qual- um, quality um bureau on the mainland. Mister Elven Young, can you please go back to the point? Well, I am trying to explain to you the term zhuang. Have you looked at the bill you're trying to replace weight with mass here? I'm talking about the um national, the official quality control organization is the national quality supervision and monitoring um bureau. And when they talk about zhuang, they refer to quality. The problem lies here. I'm sure you understand, President, because you are so smart. But Professor Joseph Lee probably did not understand the definition. However, if Professor Lee didn't understand it, I'm sure many people would also misunderstand the term. Zhuang is understood as quality in Hong Kong. The chief executive in last year's speech said, and I quote, that the uh government will not only require the uh structural um requirement of the construction um, when we, when we look at um quality, then we are going to um investigate. So she also referred to zhuang as quality. Mister Elven Young, can you please come back to the topic? I've never digressed a president. The mass we're talking about here, the zhuang refers to mass. Well, this is exactly, this is exactly what I'm trying to illustrate. That when you hear the term zhuang, then people will think that it's quality. Mister Elven Young, if you continue to digress from the topic, then I will have to ask you to stop. Well, this is an, this is an argument that I'm trying to explain. Well, when there is misunderstanding in the Chinese version, then our responsibility is to point out the English translation. Well, when you're talking about a zhuang, many people refer it to quality. I'm trying to explain it to you, and I'm giving you ex- I'm giving examples. Well, you've said clearly that the zhuang here refers to mass. This is not a court debate. We are now scrutinizing the clauses. We're now looking into whether we are going to um adopt clause one to twelve as main provisions of the bill. Well, so in future, are we just going to just um go against the bill all the time? No, I'm giving you concrete examples and trying to explain to you that even the Hong Kong government uh, uses, is this words in a different manner, and this is called lost in translation because the term used is not the exact definition. This leads to misunderstanding. Sometimes it's mass, sometimes it's weight. So how do you differentiate between the two? The zhuang you speak about refers to quality, but to other people, it refers to what's mass or weight. Then, how are you to understand it clearly? Well, of course, well, not everyone is as smart as you. Please do not digress. I've never digressed. Well, if you're ruling me that I'm digressed from the topic, I'm not. I'm not speaking out of nowhere. I'm not speaking out of context. I'm giving you examples, I'm giving you concrete examples and trying to explain to you where the problem lies with the term mass. Or, but then, uh, you are now representing um, um, the quality. What did I say? Or how long have I spoken? I'm just talking about the terminology used in clause three and four. Well, this is the quality we see in medical. We, I now adjourn the meeting and we will resume at two in the afternoon.